Okay. Alrighty, it's 5:00 PM. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll do a quick roll call. Mr. Barton.
Here.
Mr. Fresh Air.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Dr. Manning.
Here.
Everybody's here. Alright, we'll go to Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody will stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Righty. We do have a delegation. Ms. Barbara White, so she'll just come up to the podium there. And I will set a three-minute timer for you, and at the end of that three minutes, we'll call it good. The board members don't have to respond to questions, but if there's something that we feel needs placed on the next agenda from your delegation, we can ask the superintendent to put it on the next meeting agenda for discussion, and we can handle it that way. So let me get you... Ready? Alright, you're good to go.
I just want to see if there's any way we can get a bus to go to my house to get the kids. With my husband and my work schedule, it's not working out. I've done my homework. It is five miles from the end of 47 to Auburn, and I know they take a Gilmore County bus there because I followed every morning to work. It is four miles from my house, or from my house to the bus stop, and it's three miles from my house to the Gilmore County line. I talked to Joe Frazier, and he said it was just way too far along the line. But if we can go to Auburn, why can't we come to my house too?
Okay.
My babysitter that's been getting the kids is going back to work, so I won't have anyone get the kids. And if I pick them up before I go to work because I work night shift, then they're going to miss their eighth period every day.
Could I ask where your house is located?
It's 147.
Like an exact address, so we can map?
25686. Stop and Turnpike. Smithville. Or it's 26178.
Smithville. Okay. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have the superintendent look into that and see what we can get done.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Can you leave us a contact number or?
304. 517. 7021. And I won't have my phone at work, so if you just leave a message, I can get back to you the next morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a good day.
Alrighty, that'll move us out of delegations, and we'll go to reports. And we have the Calhoun-Gilmore Career Center Administrative Counsel, Mr. Barton. Go ahead.
Alright, let's do some good stuff here first. National Technical Honor Society for this year. In auto mechanics, Gilmore County has six students that made that. Calhoun has one. In culinary, Gilmore had one. Calhoun has two. Carpentry, Gilmore has one, and Calhoun has two. In law and public safety, Gilmore has two students. Calhoun has one. In the technical class, we have six. They had five. Nursing, Gilmore had five students. Calhoun has nine. Welding, Gilmore had two. And all total, we have 23 kids from Gilmore County that have made the National Technical Honor Society, and Calhoun had 20. So that's, you know, at the end of the year, there ought to be several of those that graduation will be able to wear their awards that they have accrued there. The, uh, they gave the Nocti. Pre-test. And in allied health, the percentages at work entry level force was 54%. Health was 89. Automotive was 11. Baking was 52%. Carpentry was 13. Computer repair, uh, is 11%. We're in workforce readiness. Law and public safety, it's 58%. That one is important because they just became a business partner with FCI. And since FCI is in our playground, in a manner of speaking, that means there's possibility of jobs when you get your associate degree, and they come out of there pretty well, not needing too many more hours to have their degree. And that would be 20 years, and you can retire. Federal benefits, federal insurance. So that's a really good match. Information system, 50% were meeting workforce entry. Pro-start restaurant, there was 41%. Welding, 47% of them were there. And again, uh, welders, particularly when the pipeline business may be getting ready to, uh, ramp back up again, you're talking high-dollar, high-dollar jobs. Braxton County had six kids, five kids, that after they graduated went to Jersey, and they were making over 50 bucks an hour and $120 a day per diem. That's not bad for 18-year-old, three weeks after graduation. That's more money than any of us in here make. So there's a possibility of good things coming up. Electrical, a fourth of their kids were already meeting workforce entry. And again, that is a job as adjournment, getting your insurance and your holiday pay. According to the union shop people, that comes out to be $70 an hour. And those kids as a senior can have their adjournment license. And once the program's really established, and they can get one of the unions to do some things like they do in wood, you could come out of there and have your master's electrical license. So there's good things looking up in, in that part of it. They, uh, had a jumpstart presentation, which came from the West Virginia Treasurer's Office. What that is for students, entrepreneurs that are getting ready to think about start their own business. That was a savings account, so they can get in realm to do that. They had a student-led pinkout on the 29th of October. In law enforcement, helped with the Halloween walk at the elementary school. They helped with the Veterans Day program that was at GSU. And on the 8th of November, uh, they brought all the, all the students up to GSU for a, for a tour of... So they would have some idea when, when they graduated, what would be able to be offered to them there in that realm. So things were, are on a, on a pretty good roll. The farm marshal has to approve the booths. If you've ever been in a welding classroom, they're normally pretty pathetic for two reasons. Lighting's lousy and ventilation system is, uh, subhuman. And they have the, the ventilation system is done. They're waiting on the farm marshal to, uh, come and pass it, and then the kids would be able to get it back in the booths. And right now, they're welding outside, uh, so it will be a good thing. And hopefully, they will be able to do something with, with the lighting. On January the 15th, uh, the LIC and the Advisory Council, there'll be a meeting, and then the welding lab will have open house after that. So somewhere around 11:30-ish, if you're available, and you can go tour the, the, uh... The welding lab. And... The, the director inherited this, and this has a lot of relevance to us here also, but... Audit findings are a year behind. They, uh, so for the audit year 2324, she inherited seven audit findings that she has to deal with. She didn't create them, but since she's now the director, she now owns them. She has to take care of them. And a lot of it dealt with, uh, ordering items without a purchase order. I don't know how you do that. For instance, here, it used to be if you ordered something and you didn't have the requisition to pay purchase order, I can guarantee you who bought it. Person that ordered. The school didn't pay for it. That's an illegal expenditure. Doesn't matter what it is. No exception. It might be if, if you had a water main leak out here, and they needed a band clamp quickly, and you don't have time to go over the paperwork, do it, you do it, go get it, and then you report it. And what it was is definitely an emergency, not something that you crafted to be. But she has, uh, receipts. Money was made with deposits like without a receipt, vending machines, faculty sent it. Monies weren't, uh, ended at the end of the year, weren't ended right. And the beginning of the year, they weren't punched back out into correct items like they should have been. So like I said, she has seven audit findings that, uh, that she has to deal with for, for the last school year. But all in all, they are, they are doing quite well. Like I said, we have a lot of, a lot of kids that, uh, making the Technical Honor Society is a big deal. And, uh, so I think we had, like I said, I was really proud. We had more than Calhoun did. So I think that's a good thing. So that's basically from down there all I had.
Thanks, sir. That'll move us into the consent agenda, and we'll start with the amendments.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 28th, 2024 regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the October 28th, 2024 regular meeting. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Alrighty, that'll move us to bills for payment. Dr. Manning, you have anything for us under that section?
Just, um, look through them. They all look right to me. We discussed one that we might have to add some additional funding GSU for the bus, but we can invoice that at a later date, I think.
Make a motion to approve bills.
One question. It deals with the gas, the gas bill. One of the elementary schools, like $107. One at the high, at the high school is $107, and at the elementary school is well over $1,100. Why is there such a disparity?
I'd have to get back to you on that.
I mean, it's just...
I can, I can find out a, an answer to that if, if you want me to.
Could be meter readings, a lot of different things. They might have estimated the one before. Took an actual meter reading.
Make a motion to approve the bills for payment.
Second.
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the bills for payment. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Alright, we'll go to budget supplements.
Is there anything there, Tony?
Anything there, Dr. Manning?
All of that funding that you see was currently budgeted, um, i- in last year's budget. It's carryover. There's no tran- other than there's no transferring from one fund to the other. It's going into the same funds. It's carryover funding. And I think, um, on your executive content, you can see that, um, that those are supplements. They're earmarked and encumbered. They're carryover from, from that, uh, from '24. So those were items that were already budgeted in the prior fiscal year, and now they're moved into our new fiscal year, and they're not new funds. They're just needing to be, um...
Done every year.
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve the budget supplements as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the budget supplements as presented. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
I would say that that memo was helpful.
Yeah.
Explaining it.
Alright, so that will move us now into new business. And we'll start with approval of MOU with Marshall University Research Corporation. Dr. Manning.
Um, this is, um, an MOU that I believe and that, um, will allow us to share resources back and forth with, um... A, um, this is the school psychologist, correct? She is, th- there is, um, a employee that is trying to become a school psychologist. And this MOU will provide the framework for that person to be able to work for us and be able to do work through Marshall University and obtain that degree.
With a little bit of funding from us, if we agree to it.
Yes, with a little bit of funding for us if we agree to it.
Is that during school, after school, Shelley? Is that a little bit of both?
It would be a little bit of both.
Okay.
Before writing to the after-school and then like for supervision and, and working with Katie to assess would be during school. So we would have to work with her.
Okay. Yeah, that, she would actually kind of shadow our, our psychologist during, whenever they conduct assessments and things like that.
Which I think is beneficial since we need more school psychologists.
Absolutely.
Yeah, mental health.
So I make a motion, uh, to approve the MOU with Marshall University Resource Research Corporation.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the MOU with Marshall University Research Corporation in Gilmore County Schools. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Alrighty, we'll move on to permission for painting at Gilmore County Elementary School. Dr. Manning.
This is one of those things that doesn't, it doesn't have to be bid out, but we wanted to let you guys kind of know what was going on and get your, get your all's approval. The, the tall stairwells in that building, um... We didn't feel comfortable with, with turning our folks loose on it. Our handyman crew, our handyman crew could paint, you know, the, the, kind of the lower areas and things like that. And so we've reached out, um, to someone willing and to get, to get a quote. And this hopefully could be done during Thanksgiving break. But, uh, we looked to put in about $6,700 into painting both of those large stairwells, the high portions of those large stairwells. The, um, quote is listed there, and it's been quoted by David McLaughlin. The total project cost would be $6,729 to paint those stairwells. And they're in need of painting. They look, they need painted. They've, they've got several different colors and so on and so forth. And we want those hallways to look good. We don't want to put, you know, um, cheap paint or anything on there. We want to go with good quality stuff and paint them back where they look right in that school. So this is just a courtesy. We, we wanted to run it by you guys and get your approval to make sure that you were good with that, uh, with, with that process and that quote, um, before we did that.
I'll make your motion to approve the painting project. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming it's, he's got this language in here because it doesn't show the price, but it says like 24 gallons at 1104 before tax, and primer is like 105 before tax. Obviously, we don't pay tax. So is he just gonna, is that a typo, or is he planning on?
We're going to supply the paint, so we would not have to pay tax on the paint. So we would have to go buy the paint for, we're going to supply the materials, and he's just going to come and pay.
I assume that it just, in, in his, in his quote, he, he had before tax, and I'm going to say, eh, that's a penny here or there, but...
I make a motion to approve the painting project for both stairwell, stairwells at the high school by David McLaughlin.
Yep, no, it's elementary school.
Elementary.
Elementary, sorry.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the painting project for both stairwells at Gilmore County Elementary School by David McLaughlin. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Right. Next on, for review policy 5320 immunizations. Dr. Manning.
There was a few extra things in the immunization policy from Miola. Uh, a few extra required vaccinations that we felt, uh, they weren't requirements that we felt would be important to take out of there. For example, hepatitis A would be one of those. So we did a strike through, and we're, we'd like to put that out on comment. And I'd like to, uh, recommend you guys making a motion to put that out there on comment. These are, this greatly affects the preschool population. So the, the, uh, vaccinations that we have eliminated there are not on the state requirement. They are just additional vaccinations.
So we're going away with them?
Well, we're not going to require them for entry because they're not required for entry.
Yeah, we're just matching our policy to the state.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the superintendent's recommendation to place policy 5320 immunizations out for a 30-day review slash public comment period. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Alright, approval of West Virginia Read-allowed Volunteers.
Um, the volunteer listed there is Susan Bone, and I make the recommendation to approve her as a West Virginia Read-allowed Volunteer.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve Susan Bone as a 2024, 2025 West Virginia Read-allowed Volunteer. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Alrighty, approval of Jam Instructors. Dr. Manning.
This is, um, I just wanted to give you guys an update. We do have two people that are interested, and they show, they have shown interest. And we have started Jesse Milns, which, uh, led our program last year. And David Odell, he showed up to our first practice. And I would like, um, you guys to approve them as contracted jam instructors.
That money's already allocated. We're not...
Yes, that's already allocated.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve David Odell and Jesse Milns as jam instructors. So any further discussion or amendments to that made motion?
No, that, I really think Mr. Odell, though, he's, he's famous in his own right for what he does. It's awesome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Alrighty, we're to discussion of community, communities and schools funding, and I believe that's Miss Base.
Yes, um, I talked... I talked with Cynthia Sorsia, who is the state lead for those communities and schools. And when she reviewed our budget, she suggested we reallocate the supply money to a person to finish out the year to provide support for our students. She said that would benefit us better than buying things for those students. So we are looking to, to use, there was 40,000 put in the budget for supplies and to reallocate that with a person.
So at the high school?
It would go back to the high school, and they would help with the attendance. They would help with Second Steps, which is a social-emotional program we have, doing small groups.
And that would be with targeted kids?
That would be your targeted and intensive kids. Um, and then they do do core, which is your tier one, which depending upon whether it's a social-emotional issue or an attendance issue, what that looks like.
Is that primarily for the junior highs, six through eight kiddies?
Well, what, what I would look at doing is splitting that person back up to where we would have one at the high school and one at the junior high.
That was my question.
Just for the, for the mere fact that they are very needy.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why.
And the middle school is very, that's, yeah, that's, yeah.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
And programs like Second Step and those types of programs can, can be taught in the core, which will help those students as well.
If, yeah, they can do the core, or they can do tier two, which is, um, the targeted groups.
Will they be go, will she be just, will she be divided between saying, doing some high school, some middle, junior high? Or will she just be basically with?
What we would look at doing is putting Alicia back with the high school so she can catch up on attendance and the graduation and the social-emotional and then pieces. And then we would put this person back with middle school.
Okay.
So we don't need a motion for this?
Well, we actually, we got a permission to post the position later on in the, on the personnel agenda.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Base? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alrighty, old business. Okay. That'll bring us to personnel. And I'll make a motion that we go into executive session, uh, West Virginia Code 6-9A-42 to discuss personnel that might affect, adversely affect the reputation of any person. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
We're going to go talk about that J.T. box. We're going to go talk about that J T box.
See, I was bribing those who tracked that before and I forgot. Okay, starting with the professional section, recommendations for hire, Assistant Principal, Gilmer County Elementary School, Sonya Hartson, Instructional Interventionist, GCHS Andrew Butcher, Instructional Interventionist, GCHS Casey Miller, Instructional Interventionist, GCHS Madison Shepherd, Mentor Teacher, 6th Grade Ronnie Fesmeyer, Substitute Teacher Gabriel Onorato.
I'll make a motion to approve the professional part.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded.
Personnel agenda.
To approve the professional portion of the personnel agenda. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All righty, going to service.
Service recommendation, Daisy Snyder, Substitute Teacher, Transportation Aid, Brandon Farby, Substitute Custodian, Terry Stoniger, Retirement Classroom Supervisory Transportation Aid, Grade 1, Gilmer County Elementary School, Effective 11/16/24, Donna E. Step, Resignation, Custodian, Gilmer County Elementary School, Effective 11/8/24.
Make a motion to approve the service part of the personnel agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the service portion of the personnel agenda. Any further discussion or amendments to that main motion?
I'd just like to thank Terry Stoniger for all her years of service and help with the kids at the elementary school.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Extracurricular.
Recommend for hire, Kara Ferguson, Auxiliary Mini Titan Softball Coach, Bailey Fraser, Auxiliary Mini Titan Softball Coach, Jacob Persinger, Assistant Varsity Baseball Coach, Emma Taylor, Auxiliary Elementary Basketball Coach, Josh Bunogle, Auxiliary Elementary Basketball Coach, David Russell, Elementary Basketball Coach, 4th/5th, James Huffman, Auxiliary Varsity Baseball Coach, Bailey Fraser, Auxiliary Mini Titan Girls Basketball Coach, Jessica Montgomery, Head Mini Titan Cheerleading Coach, Ethan Burkhammer, Auxiliary Varsity Boys Basketball Coach, Amanda Williams, Resignation, Varsity Girls/Boys Track Coach.
Make a motion to approve the extracurricular part of the personnel agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the extracurricular portion of the personnel agenda. Any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All righty, we're to permission to post.
Next two are permission to post. The first one is Communities and Schools Liaison, redirecting that funding that we just discussed. And the second, we've got a pretty high need in a special education classroom at Gilmer County Elementary School, and this aid would alleviate that need for the time being this year. We have the funding to do that, so make the recommendation to provide permission to post those two positions.
Make a motion to approve the permission to post portion of the personnel agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the permission to post portion of the personnel agendas. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All righty, that'll take us out of Personnel and move us down to Continuous Improvement. And we have the NMSQT results. Just against Mr. Fox.
That's a whole lot of alphabet.
It is.
So, what I will tell you, it's, this is, and to make things easier, it's our PSAT information, and this is gonna, what we're gonna look at as we move forward, and you guys are gracious enough to set us up with some interventionists that we just got approved, so we are gonna start moving forward with utilizing those with this, not only with the middle school side of it, but with the PSAT data that we have now, move forward with identifying students and move forward with that. And what I will do is I'll give you guys each a copy of this here. I tried, and bear with me a little bit, as we look through it, you may wanna pull that top sheet off. The second sheet is gonna be the most important piece here, as I look through it. There's a lot of pieces here that discuss the test takers, the amount of test takers that we have, which was with a 57, but the biggest piece is on the second side here, and I've highlighted those four. And that is just using, looking at the data here from, from the assessment, the NMSQT, which is our, is our PSAT data here. Right now, as of today, after, and this is from two weeks ago, 53 of our juniors, our 11th graders met standard, which is, which is a very strong number. When we compare that to last year at the end of the year for that, that SAT at SAT was at 34%. So, it's looking promising there, but we still gotta keep moving forward. And then when we look over here to the right side, as of right now, and once again, this was two weeks ago, 18% met proficiency in math, which was last year, which was 8% on that SAT. 18% is an improvement, and it's, it's a big improvement. We'll start talking about that in double digits there, but we are, we're ready to start utilizing these individuals that you guys have provided us to start moving forward with that, to start getting interventions set up, always 6 through 12, and we're ready to start breaking those students down. We've identified, there are 14 students right now who are within 30 points of getting over that, that mark there to get to proficient. So, all of a sudden, when you start throwing those numbers out, we can get 15, or I'm sorry, 14 students in each area move, that, that number starts to move quickly. But we're not, we're not content with just 14.
You said it was only 57 kids?
57 students.
Yeah, 14, that's, that's good.
Is there a way to look at the data, break it down, not just for benchmark, but for, like, Promise Scholarship? Because if we could identify those kids that are on the edge of a Promise Scholarship, you know, that would be something we could focus on, too, that would make a huge monetary difference for a lot of kids.
Absolutely. And, and what we'd have to do is look at all those other pieces of that, but that's definitely an opportunity to sit down and look at those pieces. And we'd have to look at all those criteria for that, but then start pulling these students into mix with that.
Yeah, I just, I mean, it makes a, a big difference, especially if they're gonna go to Flint State.
And just, just to follow up, Mastery Prep, the, the program that we just purchased, our hope with that program, and it's a self-guided practice program for SAT, we hope to change the narrative on the amount of, of Promise Qualified Students. Those students that are just close to receiving, may have, maybe at Mastery. Hopefully, when we do the bootcamp, the numbers that the company provided were 50 to 100 points, that would send them over the edge. This is a practice SAT, but it, the NMSQT stands for National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. So, this is the test that they would be able to take to qualify to become a National Merit Scholar. And with these results, we can kinda gauge on what could happen in the spring with the SAT. The, usually, we're, we're using this as a, as a PSAT, kinda seeing where our, our gaps are at, and then we'll be able to go back with those interventionists and pull out specific groups. In our Colts meeting, we did, I did hand out that data. We do have a list of students that are approaching that, that cut score to, to score career-ready on, on the SAT. And there's probably 10 in, in math and in ELA. Just to give you an idea, that 18% is what, 10 students? If we can get those 10 that are approaching, those are really close. These will be some really high SAT scores, and that's our goal, was identifying those groups of kids, letting them use Mastery Prep, letting them use Khan, sticking with that, that type of program, and every day, getting those kids intervention, so we can get those scores to be college and career-ready, meet that SAT cut score.
Now, now, what's the equivalent test in the middle school? There's too many names.
GSA.
GSA, okay. And so, we'll just do the same thing with the GSA in the middle school, what, those interventionists to try to bump kids up?
We've already started identifying those students and working with staff there to identify, we'll work with those interventionists moving forward as well to identify, find those areas.
And we've looked at the schedule to find the gaps in the schedule to be able to get those small groups together and provide intervention in the classroom for those students in both, in both areas. So, we're hopeful. The scores are much better. This is a very good 11th grade group, but this, I mean, we have the opportunity to have really, really high SAT scores with this group. Really proud of the 11th graders. Another thing that I'm very proud of, of the students, and, and this, this is the students that do this. You can't do this when they have apathy. Everybody reported that the students really took the test seriously. Now, practice tests are hard to get kids to take seriously sometimes. They took the test seriously and tried. So, that was a report that I think you should be aware of. The 11th grade is actively trying and, and trying to improve their test scores, the students are. So, very proud of the students, wanna give them a lot of kudos for trying so hard, because they, they've shown vast improvement on the test.
The PSA, don't they take that their 10th grade year?
So, the benchmark assessment, the PSAT assessment is a 9th, 10th, and then the 11th grade, they take SAT School Day.
So, is this data from the last?
This, this is from two weeks ago.
This 11th grade class right now.
Mm-hmm.
I think if you look, Mr. Fox, if you look like on the first page, since you have the, the program that the board so graciously purchased, and you have the interventionists, you have a chance to move those kids up, which is what the global test takers are basically doing. They're testing those that are, I hate to say this, but they're testing those that are the best and the brightest. Everybody else is sent to a trade school or someplace else, basically, to be quite honest about it. So, you're within striking distance of those with some hard work. And I think that you talking to the kids and telling them, you know, it was important, and it's worth money, it's worth scholarship money, this test is important for that reason, I think made, made a difference. I mean, like I said, they're, they're a lot better than they were last year. They're nothing, but I, like I said, I think.
Hoisted for greatness.
Yes, you can move them, you can move them to the, to the point they need to be, with a lot of hard, hard work and elbow grease and that kinda thing. But that's what I said, that first page to me is, they're not where I'd like to see them, but I can see if you do these other things, you can, you can be up to where, you're way above, would be way above the state. The state average for me is, is nothing great, but you can be up to where the US average is, and with some luck, you might take out the other one, and that would be a good thing, which is where, but it's just perseverance, perseverance.
Is there any sort of incentive that we could give those kids that are gonna be working with those interventionists to raise their scores, to, to maybe reward them if, if we, we get, you know, we see that benefit come?
Pizza party?
You know, to fruition. I mean, I know not, something, but you know, like, if we could look into that as a, you know, as a board to, to put something there for them, because if not, you're asking a kid to go work with a teacher when typically they might be doing something else. It's like, oh, this feels like punishment, you know what I mean? But if you.
And of course, reiterating the financial gain of those that are going to.
I understand that part, but.
It's hard for kids to see that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
To see the long-term benefits.
Yeah, when you're 12, it's hard to recognize that kinda thing.
They're getting a sweet treat Friday, I guess, if they come to school. They're getting a sweet tree Friday, I guess, as they come to school.
You raise your, you know, your test scores five by five percent, or 10%, whatever, we need to get over that benchmark to have more.
Praise.
Yeah.
You, you used to have them, if you set a goal to do that, you set where you want them, and then the ones, the ones of it that made it, then, then you give them.
Probably talking about a handful of kids here, too.
Or any of the others, any of the others that raised, raised their certain percentage point. You treat them to a, I hate to say a party, but you treat them to some type of, uh, reward. Mountain Dew and, and no baked cookies. It works, but, but for any, for any of them, for all of them that, that jumped their scores up so many percentile points, reward all of them, because if you don't, then the ones that are doing the other, don't have any incentive, but that's, that is a great improvement.
Yep.
So, we're, we're, we're really hopeful that those, you know, we wanna continue to press on and, and utilize the interventionists, but, uh, we're really hoping Mastery Prep has the effect that we, we, we've been told it has, and, um, hopefully, we can see even more improvement by the end of the year.
And since you're standing there, with, with all the change that, that an administration, the high schools had, just wanted to make sure one thing, don't slip through the cracks. Dr. Min, Dr. Minnie had typed up a, uh, memo that had went out earlier this, this summer, and just wanna make sure it's in your desk, all your paperwork, where the, where the honor letter was being re-instituted, for a better way of putting it. Just wanna make sure that was.
It has been, that it has been a conversation.
Good deal. I just didn't want that one going with the way of the flying out airplane.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Alrighty, that'll move us into the Superintendent's Update. Dr. Minnie.
So, merry Christmas. I'm a cheer up.
Okay, I just wanted to give you an update, that I went to the School Building Authority today. Um, Mr. Fraser and I presented, we asked for about $2 million for a couple different projects at Gilmer County High School. One was a domestic hot water, um, and all-new piping facilities, and that was one we tried to really, hopefully, even if we get partial funding, we can get that one. It's on its last leg. Um, the other piece of that presentation was for a new roof over the animal processing and Boag building, and a new roof over the science wing. Uh, they were very complimentary of the Ag, um, room, that, most of those guys have toured it themselves. Uh, so, uh, we did our very best at presenting. Uh, we've been pretty successful there. I don't know if we can get the funding, but you can't get it unless you ask for it. So, we went out and tried, and, and hopefully, we can get some SBA funds, uh, and, and maybe focus on that domestic hot water, um, if nothing else. Maybe they'll have a little sliver of money that they can throw our way just for one of those projects. Uh, just wanted to give you a heads up that Jam has started. We have 10 students. We have two instructors that you guys approved this evening. I think they've done an excellent job. They learned a tune on the first night, um, and, uh, we got a ways to go, um, but they, they, uh, the, the expansion to the, uh, elementary school was successful, the kids are excited, and I think they're gonna be attending regularly and, and, and learning from those folks, and it was really good to have the kids out. They all want, uh, Mr. Price out there to bring his guitar, so maybe he can join in, uh, with them, but they mentioned Mr. Price a couple times there, uh, last week.
They need to, uh, at the end of the year, they need to come and play a tune for us here, and Mr. Price can join in.
I think that they will be ready by the.
You think there's a spot for a tambourinist in there?
I don't even know if a tambourinist exists. What's that?
How about January 21st?
It'll be close. We got some students that are advanced enough to probably play.
The reason you're doing it, I'm being serious. The retired teachers have their meeting, I think, I wanna say January 21st at the Career Center, and if they have a couple they could play, we would like to have them do that.
We could probably get a couple to do a few tunes. We couldn't put on an hour-long show.
No, 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 just a couple tunes.
Yes, we probably could do that.
Okay, good deal. I have your first incentive.
Yes, um, we could probably get a couple of our more advanced students to do two or three tunes.
That'd be good.
And I think it would be good for people to see them, cause they get pretty excited to play in front of people.
Oh, I think the community's real excited about it.
I just wanted to say, I've been getting a lot of positive feedback from the Veterans' Day Celebration. I wanted to thank all those folks that took the extra time and tried to organize a bigger event, um, specifically Ashley Barker. She worked very hard for that event, and a lot of different pieces had to be put together, and, and hopefully, that's an event that if we, if we, um, can make some improvements, will just get bigger and bigger. Um, I wanna welcome the new interventionists. I think that those, um, positions are gonna play a real pivotal part in our school improvement process, and I wanna welcome them on board, and hopefully, we can make a big difference in student achievement, um, by focusing in on those students that need it the most, and hopefully, we can have some painting done over, over break. I wanna wish everybody a, a happy Thanksgiving. Um, I will be moving, so it will be not very happy for me, but I wish everybody else a happy Thanksgiving. And, um, with that being said, um, a while back, the board gave me the authority where they wouldn't vote on each one of these, but I'd like to give every 230-day employee, observe Black Friday as a holiday, everybody 230 and above. If everybody's good with that. So, um, that's all I've got. We've had a, a quick November. November seems like it just flew by, but I think that we're, we've got a lot of good things going. I've got one final update that I wanna run by you guys. Um, it deals with our, our ad hoc committee, um, and I'm just gonna read you a little bit of the work we've done. We hope to have a full presentation for you by the next meeting to get you guys up to date on all the things that we've accomplished, but it basically is an introduction. The Gilmer County Schools is excited to announce a new fundraising initiative to support, uh, what we call the Bolt Health and Fitness Center. It's a grassroots project dedicated to promoting health and wellness within our community. The center will not only enhance athletic performance, but also foster confidence, well-being, and overall development among our students. The Bolt aims to provide students with access to modern fitness equipment, state-of-the-art facility where they can engage in physical activities that contribute both to their mental and physical health. And so, we're seeking partnerships, um, and sponsorships. We plan to have two different ways that we organize raising funds for this. Gilmer County Schools has some set aside. We plan on, um, finding what we call Gilmer Patrons, or Titan Patrons, which they will be purchasing a cubic foot of the building for $10. And then we also plan to have sponsorships where businesses and so forth can become a sponsor and donate funds for the, um, for this effort. And then we just wanted to highlight to the board that the group's making some progress. We have a QR code, we have an online payment system, we're soon to have a website, we're soon to have the actual physical flyer that will go out where you guys can see what the building would look like and so on and so forth, and would like to present at the next meeting, so the rest of the board can see what kinda work that we've done so far.
Did you say the bolt, like a lightning bolt?
Like a lightning bolt.
Yeah, yeah, the bolt.
That was Tom John's nickname in high school.
Yeah.
Wasn't fast.
So, um, that, uh,
Big boy.
That, um, we tried to come up with something catchy that the kids would like, and like a, an area that they'd like to go to, and, and so we, we've kinda brainstormed catchy ideas, and, and we have a mock-up drawing, and we'll be putting out, um, how to donate and become a Titan Patron and a sponsor, um, hopefully, the week or two after we get back from Thanksgiving break.
There's a lot of incentives, too, with like being the Titan Patron, depending on like how much money you, you give towards the project, like.
No, it's more like advertisements and signs on the building, name recognition. Yeah, businesses that sponsor, we wanna reward them with advertising, with our Titan Nation Live programming. We wanna give them, you know, get their logos out, so the community knows that they're, they're sponsoring and they're helping us, um, and making sure that people are recognized for helping our students in the project.
Even offer some sponsorship in your little, uh, football thing where you talk.
Yeah, well, we plan to.
That's, that's what he was saying.
That's what we're talking about. The Titan Nation Live is our, our streaming service, and we plan to have that.
That's in basketball, that's all sports. That'll be in all sports this year, too.
You can even purchase a cubic foot of space.
Yeah.
For 10 bucks.
All right.
So, that's just an update, and I wanted to give that update to the board, and we hope to have a full presentation about the whole, the whole project at the next meeting.
That'd be great. Alright, that'll move us into Board Member Comments. We'll start with Mr. Chat.
Well, Dr. Minnie stole the thunder right there. No, I'm joking. Uh, no, I just hope the students take advantage of the interventionists that we, that we hired today and put in place, uh, and, you know, like I say, um, that, that can really make a big difference, and they can make a really big difference. So, I just hope the students, uh, take to those interventionists, and that's good.
And to the parents.
Yes, Mr. Fox, glad you're here today. So, basketball season is upon us, and just, you know, as you drive down the road and you look at a person's house and you judge the buck, you know, our school, we have a nice, I think the outside of our school looks really nice. However, when we have basketball games, that lets the community come into our schools, and I can't, I, I can't really speak for last year, and this may be a, it may al, it may already be done, but I have avoided the bathrooms like the plague because of how just they are. And before we get kick, kicked off here, I mean, at the next meeting, I would even have a special meeting to approve funds to upkeep the bathrooms before the basketball season starts. So, when people come into our schools and, and look at our facilities, you know, whether you think so or not, they're gonna judge you upon your bathroom to come and watch a basketball game. So, I mean, if we need doors, I, I don't care if we had to get plywood and stick it up, but let's, let's make sure our bathrooms are nice.
You know, I wasn't aware of that until Colton said something about it, that we don't have doors on the stalls.
Yeah, and I, and I understand there might be, but for people coming in our school, I think it's.
That's what Colton thought. He said, "Mom, they're just so bad. They took the doors off our bathroom stalls."
I didn't think any doors off.
I was like.
No, I know, this, you, you kinda just fell into that one, but I'm just saying, because it is.
It's not like the girls' bathroom, it's nicer.
Is it really? I'm, you have to beat my lookout. But just to kinda take a peek at that, man, cause.
But, Mr. Chatman's correct. Mr. Minnie and, Dr. Minnie and I served on onsite, so when you went into a new school, went to the restroom, if it was clean, you had about a 90% chance everything else was on the money, and if it was a disaster, you knew you were in for a long day. That's, he's right, that's a fact.
And then the only other thing is, is with the, with our ad hoc committee, it, it's just something I'm really looking forward to. I, and you know, we do projects and we get money, and people donate money, and it's to this little group, and to that little group, and for this, and for that. This is for our whole student body. Uh, I mean, every kid that comes through our school will have an opportunity to, to make themselves, you know, better. And a healthy student is a smart student, so, I mean, that's proven fact, so I, I'm really excited to, to what we can get done.
That's it. Dr. Miller?
Oh, one more thing. And also, Dr. Minnie, I'm gonna be thinking about you out there in the deer stand while you're moving boxes, and just sitting out there just taking in.
You could always come hell.
Hopefully, I'll get one Monday, and I'll give you a call if I get one down Monday.
He'll send you pictures.
Yeah.
Um, it's almost the most wonderful time of the year. My Christmas tree's up, my presents are purchased, I'm ready for a few good books over Thanksgiving. I hope everybody takes the time to recharge and refresh, and come back, uh, ready to make our school the one that everybody holds up and say, "Yeah, we, we wanna be like them." Um, everybody's been working really hard. I'm proud of our achievements. Um, just keep up the good work. I also wanna congratulate Sonya Harts horn on, uh, the Vice Principal at the Gilmer County Elementary School, and with Terry Stonaker retiring, want to thank her from the board, uh, for all her years of service.
Mr. Frisher?
Oh, what's there left to say? Nothing for me, no comment.
Mr. Martin?
I get to be the resident hemorrhoid, I reckon, this, tonight, so might as well. Mr. Fox, I'm really glad you're here. Seriously, I am. Pat you on the back lot. But, like I said earlier, dealing with, with the, uh, at the Career Center, dealing with their, uh, audit findings 23, 24, uh, you had one, and it dealt with the purchase order, that something was ordered without, and.
Technically, not him.
Not him, I know. That's why, that's why I'm saying, not you, not you. But the 24, 25 year that will be audited, you will have probably several of them. Again, not you, but you're going to inherit it. From the other day when you took over, I, I would suggest to you that, like I said before, anybody orders something without the proper paperwork, they own it, not you. It's technically an illegal expenditure, and they get really bent out of shape, and it's, it's real simple. You gotta have a requisition, you gotta have a purchase order, order it. If you don't, there's a, there's a big problem. And Mr. Price, yours had for 23, 24, you had two. One was a Faculty Senate expenditure, and the other one was a, was a absent PO, same thing. You know, you can't run a fund into the red. Gilmer County does not allow school funds to be in the red. You have to move money to do it before it's gonna get to that point, and you have the ability to do that. And i- it's paperwork, and you had secretaries that were changing in and out, but here again, you two gentlemen, your names are on, on the paperwork, not the secretaries that's yours. So, I, I would suggest, big hammer and a big stick. Your people have to abide by it, just like Dr. Minnie's people have to abide by those things, or, where good things don't happen. Like I said, yours next year probably will have several, and you don't own them, but you do own them, you didn't do it, but you'll have to deal with that, unfortunately. The other thing, Dr. Minnie and I had talked earlier about wrestling tournaments. It's a good ways to make money, and my understanding, and you know what understanding's like? Everybody's got one, sometimes it's a lot wrong, but there's no home wrestling match, matches this year, no, no tournaments, no way for the kids to make money for their program, so, uh, that's something you might wanna look in. Uh, Dr. Minnie ran, ran quads at Braxton County, I ran them, they're not hard to do, but they do generate a lot of money, and the boosters make a lot of money off concessions, cause once they weigh in, they're like piranhas, literally speaking, and so, but, you know, and they're not, they're not hard to do. You've got, if people were gonna have practice, they got the gym here, and they have the one at the elementary for their basketball people, so if you use the high school gym to have it, cause you'll need space, it's there. It's just an easy way to keep those kids, help the program grow, cause somebody's gonna see you, otherwise, only people seeing you ever wrestle are your parents, or whoever's going, traveling with you. So, I, I would give you something maybe to look at to do that. That'll win you a lot of fans. If you're gonna, if there's ever a problem, you want your wrestling parents on your side, not on the other end. But, uh, I, I want to encourage you, I, from what I understand, uh, the, the climate there has, uh, changed immensely, and that has a lot to do with the scores that you, you had, where they, where they jumped. So, keep up the good work, and like I said, if they order it without the paperwork, they own it.
I've got one more thing. Dustin, Dustin whispers past me and I down here. I would also, I, I didn't get a chance to attend the Veterans', uh, uh, service, but I heard that it went great. I, I had a, a few friends that are veterans. They always enjoy the breakfast, and, and said the kids were really good. They enjoyed the, the musical part of it, and, uh, I, I just, I wanna thank the veterans for coming out and, and being a part of it. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have that if it weren't for them, so, thank you.
And I'll just finish up by saying, everybody have a happy holiday. We're making good progress, and keep right at it. If you have a motion, do adjourn.
So, move it.
Second.
Alrighty, I've been properly moved and seconded, adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Meeting adjourned.